He wants to be first when it's your turn, when it's time to go. Nope, you can do fine now.
Kelsey?
What grade and what you want to be in for? That's it, I'll help you. I will tell you. Trump's you all the way, okay? It'll be easy.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with our regular meeting for Monday, April 14th, 2014. Take roll call.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Habermill?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Ms. Zennis?
Here.
And Mr. Rice.
Mr. Rice is excused, he's out of town.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah. We've got some special guests here tonight that are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. They're going to come up and introduce themselves first.
My name is Abby Rhodes. I'm in second grade. My teacher's Mrs. Becker, and I want to be a nurse when I grow up.
Okay. Good job. Next.
My name is Brooklyn Vanish. My teacher's Miss Young. I'm in second grade, and I want to be a teacher like my mom when I grow up.
My name's Kelsey Leaky. First, and I'm in first grade. My teacher's Mrs. Sprinkle, and I want to be a teacher when I grow up.
My name's Michaela Carrigan. I'm in first grade. Mister Malir, and I want to be a princess when I grow up.
My name is Maggie, and I'm in first grade, and I want to be a nurse, and my teacher's Miss Schultz.
My name is Ava, and my teacher's Miss Lux. I'm in first grade, and I want to be a nurse when I grow up.
(applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At Vermillion Elementary School, we respect ourselves and other people. We show responsibility for ourselves and committed to learn.
A moment of silence.
Yeah, we, uh, that's okay.
Okay.
Seems like we're around a few minutes behind too, so.
Yeah. We'll do a moment of silence for Armstrong.
Yeah, we could do it then.
Is he going to talk then about Jack? Or you want me to have you talk first?
Do you want me to say something on that one? And then I'll ask Mr. Smith to say a few words because he knew.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead and move on the agenda. Next up, we've got item number four is our student liaison update with Mr. Habermill.
Okay, today we've got a group from Saylorway Middle School to tell us about National History Day, and we want to recognize them for their hard work, and if you guys could tell us a little bit about it and introduce yourselves and anyone you have with you.
Okay, I am Leah Gentile.
And I'm Angela DeWitt.
And we start the National History Day project actually with our sixth graders now. And we start researching, students get to pick a topic in October, and we start researching once a week in class, all the way until March. So they get to choose if they want to create an exhibit board, a documentary, a website, a skit, or they can write a paper. And then we attend the regional competition in Fremont, Ohio. We went on March 16th, and we took about 98 students. They have a choice if they'd like to go or not. It's on a Saturday, so they dedicate a lot of their time to this. And we are taking 33 students who moved on to state competitions. So we're really proud of their hard work. Each year, National History Day provides a theme for students to relate their topics to, so they're not just researching and providing information about what their topic is about, but they actually have to look at what the impact is on history. So Angela's going to talk to you about what the theme was this year, and then introduce our student who is going to show you the project.
Our theme this year was rights and responsibilities. So like Leah said, we not only have to research the project, but they have to relate it to rights and responsibilities. Out of all the topics that National History Day does, this is probably the most difficult one, we would say, because they have to be able to research and kind of analyze who is responsible for what and what the people's rights are. So that is very difficult and analyzing, but we have done very well this year. Like Leah said, we have 33 students going to the state competition, and Mr. Dale Saunders is one. So he's going to share his project on George Washington Carver.
Good evening, everybody. So as my teacher said, we got to pick in October a theme. And last year, I participated in the National History Day competition, and I thought it was a lot of fun. So this year, my principal came to me and said, Dale, I have an idea for you that you can do for this topic. And he told me about a man named George Washington Carver. Now, I had no idea who he was or what he did, and I just knew that he did something with peanuts. And I thought, okay, well, that sounds not interesting at all. And so as I started to research him, he said, just, you know, give it a try. Look his name up, check some website that's not Wikipedia, and read about him. And so I started reading and reading and reading, and as I read more, I got more absorbed into the topic. And I learned about how he lived this life of humility, and how he was always pushed down and told he couldn't do it. But, you know, he ended up really reaching the top of, in African-American history. He took the peanut, because as he grew up, he always was in the woods and in the wild, and he always had this profound connection with everything in nature. And he always believed, you know, I'm going to do something when I grow up. His parents told him, always go towards something, not run away from something. And so he said, you know, as the Civil War ended and African-Americans were gaining their rights, he thought, you know, I can do something now. We have rights, we can do things. And so he was a Christian, he believed in Jesus Christ, and he always prayed to them. And he said one day, God, give me something, tell me something, because he loved knowledge, and he really, he wanted something that he could use to change the entire world. And he believed that God said, I'm not going to tell you everything, but pick up a peanut and start learning things about it. I will explain everything from there. And so that's exactly what he did. He picked up a peanut, he started learning about it, he started learning about everything that peanuts do. And he started thinking, wow, some of the materials we make, we could just swap those out and throw a peanut in there, and it would work perfect. So he started really getting into that, and he made things like different dyes, and he made candies for Pete's sake. They taste like candies. He made a meat substance that is still used today. When you mix water with it, it tastes just like ground beef or meat. And he never patented any of these things, because as he was making more and more, he grew in fame and popularity. And he never, he never had this idea of like arrogance or vain, like I'm going to do all these things, I'm better than all these other people. No, he believed that it was his responsibility to make these things and help everybody he could. And so as growing up with no rights and having nothing, making all of these things, people were asking him, you know, Mr. Carver, we'll buy this from you if you make a patent on it, and we'll buy it for so much money, you'll be absolutely rich, please just do this for us. And he said, no, I want everybody, everybody that sees these to be able to use these to their advantage. I want everybody that can. And he never patented anything. The only money he took was from his actual job, where he worked in a college, and that's where he was given his lab. And George Washington Carver has impacted so many people to this day. He, with all the inventions he's created, it's not just about the inventions. No, it's not about that at all. It's about the things he's did, the humility he showed. He went out of his way after his work was done in colleges, and went out to farmers and said, no, you're not eating right. And he showed them how to eat. He showed them how to plant different crops, and how to crop rotate, and how to do all these things that made the soil just rich and beautiful. And there's so many people out there. There are NBA All-Stars, that one of them made a college dedicated just to George Washington Carver. And it was just, it's a beautiful thing that this man has done throughout history. And he's used more than peanuts, sweet potatoes, flowers. He's made dyes from flowers, sweet potatoes. And George Washington Carver is just someone that I, when I first heard about, thought was dull and lame, and then through this project, I've learned to come and love this man as if I knew him on my own. But, uh, yeah, about it.
Great job, thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Dale.
Good job, Dale, that was excellent. That's good. Next, we'll move on to item number five, which is our legislative update, and I do not believe we have one tonight. I think the House or the State was on recess the last couple of weeks. So we'll skip number five. Move on to item number six.
Yeah, at this time, we'd like to do a remembrance and a recognition of Jack Armstrong, who's a former teacher and mayor of Vermillion. And Mr. Smith had a personal contact in relation with him, so we're going to just ask him to take just a very brief minute and give us a little bit more information about his life. And then after that, we'll just do a quick moment of silence for him in recognition. So Mr. Smith, if you could just take a real brief time to tell us about Mr. Armstrong, and tell us what you knew of your remembrance of him as a teacher here and a mayor.
Two of my former students that sit on the board know that when I started a class, I took 50 minutes before I shut up. The things about Mr. Armstrong, I could take hours. I won't. I came here in 1962 to teach social studies at the high school, and Jack had come in '52, I think, and taught social studies at, in the junior high level. He then went to service in the Army and really lucked out. He was an English teacher, and there had been a problem in Korea where some Puerto Rican troops didn't understand the orders, and they really got into a big mess. So Jack went to Puerto Rico and taught English to Spanish-speaking soldiers. And I'm sure he did a super job. I liked the kid, Jack, because he was always teasing me about my age, that I could have had him as a student if I had gone to Vermillion. And I rubbed that in a lot. He got even a number of times. But anyway, I was lucky enough to start my teaching career beside his room. He talked English and speech, and I've got to say, he was the best high school speech teacher I ever knew. He could get things out of the shyest kids, and being on Facebook during the time after his passing, there were hundreds of former students that said, he taught me to speak in public. And I had a foster son that I was very proud of, that presided over on the board's assembly once, and he said, I couldn't have done it without Mr. Armstrong. That vein turns over and over and over again. He was just exceptional. Another thing that I was so proud of him, he had a way of organizing things, especially with the kids, but with the teachers association and our activities too, where he did all the groundwork, stepped in the background, and let the kids do it. It wasn't like many teachers who, you know, ride ahead and do it and step all over the kids. He got the kids to do it, he got adults to do it too. So I kind of, I took Mr. Armstrong's death kind of hard, because he not only was a fellow teacher, he was a friend. I had all four of his kids in school, the poor kids, but they're just fine young ladies and gentlemen too, and they take much after their dad. While he taught, he ran for city council, and the first time, he lost, because he used the name J. Russell Armstrong, and nobody knew who he was. So next time, he went on the ballot as Jack, which was his given name. And he served at least one term in council, maybe more, I don't remember. Then he ran for mayor, and he won. He did a very good job as mayor. He acquired property that the city needed, and, well, Bob Martin was by my back too. But anyway, Jack was an exemplary man. I was so sad to see him retire after 33 years. I didn't think we could go on without him. One thing he did, we used to have a junior/senior prom, and he was advisor for the junior class who put it on. They put on an elegant prom without it costing an arm and a leg. He also saw to it through his canyoning and so on, that almost everybody in the class had a date. If somebody needed some clothes, again, very quietly, behind the scenes, Jack arranged for it. Prom dresses for the girls, nice suits or tuxes for the guys, and we had a tremendous percentage of participation. When he, well, when we got big, they made it a senior prom, and he became senior class advisor too, and did the same thing with the proms. And I'm sure anybody that ever went to Vermillion High School when he was there can remember his proms. Several years ago, when the board established the Hall of Fame, I nominated Jack. It took a second year, but he was put into the Hall of Fame, and I'm glad I had a little part in that. Had a hard time gathering up all the information, and believe me, I had a ton of it. So in school, in politics, local politics, he was a leader. And I am so sorry, he's no longer. I was able to visit with him in January. He was at home in his wheelchair, but he was as sharp as ever, and ornery as ever, and he was always teasing me about my age. Well, I quickly came back with, I could, you could have been my teacher. But anyway, he would have announced, and the only reason he could remember this, that it was the date of his oldest daughter's birthday too. So he would have somebody at the end of the day announce that it was Mr. Smith's birthday. He would always add years to it. At first, the kids laughed about it. Then when he was adding 10 or 15, they believed it. So he had a sense of humor, he was one of the finest teachers I ever knew, and I was so glad that we talked close to each other for a lot of my career before he retired. And we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we want to do a silence? We're, we'll just do a minute of silence here as remembrance.
We will move on to item number seven. And special time here, recognize Evelyn Hess, who's our Saylorway Middle School cafeteria manager. Recently, Evelyn received the Louis Sublet, Louis Sublet Award of Excellence in School Nutrition from the School Nutrition Association of Ohio. Can you come up?
Yeah, Mrs. Hess, would you mind just telling us a little bit about the award? We're obviously very proud that you've won this award, and if you could just give us a little bit of a background on it briefly, about how it came about and how you did what you did.
And Jack Armstrong was one of the teachers that brought the shyness out of me, also. I was one of his students. All right, the Louis Sublet Award, that, the Louis Sublet Award is an award of excellence given to a person who has taken a special idea, developed it into a goal, and then used that goal to better their school nutrition program. This award, after I had chosen my goal, and you have to put down all your projects and activities, you have to document everything and send it away to the state, so I was notified that I was the winner for the state of Ohio, so that was very, very nice, and I was very proud of that. Now I think it goes on to regional, and then after regional, if you're lucky, then you go on to national. So there's still a chance that we might be represented, so. The goal I had chosen this year was my snack team. And the snack team I developed two years ago, and I had given them the name of the Student Nutrition Advisory Council. I just knew two years ago, I wanted to start with all the changes for, with the regulations and the school nutrition, and I wanted to start to involve some of the students, not just taste testing, which they're, you know, them taste testing the food is very valuable to get their opinions, but, you know, you just want to start getting them involved in some of the changes. So I started two years ago with a group of 12. Last year, we were thrilled to get 24 kids, and I, the sign up is usually the whole first month of school. And this year, I think we're up to 60 students, and I really never closed the enrollment, it stayed open. I still have students coming down the hall, and when's your next taste testing? Sign me up. So, you know, we don't turn anybody down. My activities, my four major things for this award was, of course, I wanted to increase membership, which I did. Second of all, I wanted to give this group validation and show that they are important and that they do make major decisions about the pizzas that we have and everything. And then my third goal was, they really should learn why they're having to make these choices. So then we started learning about nutrition and reading labels when you go to the grocery store. And now they're kind of working on helping me prepare the menu for next year. And, you know, it's funny, because they'll sit down, and one of my, one of the students said, you know, I told them, pick a fruit and pick a vegetable, and we'll go through, and then she raised her hand and said, well, I want to put salad, just salad on there. And I said, well, okay, so you want chicken and salad? And she said, yeah, because tomatoes are a fruit. And I'm going to have cucumbers and tomatoes on this salad. So they are learning something. To me, you know, I think it's, they are learning, and I think when they learn about nutrition, then they're going to be able to make better choices when they're at home or when they're out at the restaurant and everything. So I have had fun doing this this year. It's a great bunch of kids, and I, I had all kinds of pictures that I sent on for the state to see and everything, and I just want to thank you for recognizing me tonight. This was very nice. And I want to thank my, the students on the snack team. They are, like I said, I'm having a ball, we have a chef coming, we're going to do another program yet this year, I hope. And the wellness committee, we've been working really close with the wellness committee this year, and, yeah, I've just been enjoying myself. And Mr. Williamson is the operations director, he has been extremely supportive, so I thank him on that too, but thank you. I hope I clarified what the Louis Sublet Award is.
Abby, nice job.
Congratulations.
Oh, they didn't sign up.
Edie, congratulations. Next, we will move on to item number eight, which is a discussion with representatives of the Cleveland YMCA regarding the sale of Lake School property. You guys want to come up?
Good evening.
I think we've got your laptop there. The sale of the Lake School property is part of our consolidation plan. Just a little bit of history, about a year or so ago, we sold off the South Street property. This would be the next parcel to be sold off.
Is that enough?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you, board president, board members, superintendent, and the general public. My name is Glenn Haley, I'm the president and CEO of the YMCA of Cleveland. I'm the president and CEO of the YMCA of Greater Cleveland. Honored to be here this evening, and I was thrilled just to see all the activities in terms of just the student presentation and the engagement. Very impressed by the young man who made the presentation, George Washington Carver. He was a hero of mine, as a matter of fact, and someone that I was very familiar with as I grew up. His background was really around agriculture, you could imagine that. And Tuskegee is where he did a majority of his work with the school. And, I'm sorry, taught quite a while. And is still an agricultural school in the south, still doing work with farmers and helping them do a whole host of things. So, very proud of the young man. Thank you very much for that. Part of my presentation tonight is just to talk about the Vermillion YMCA, which became a part of the YMCA of Greater Cleveland in October 2012, somewhere along that line, and our goals and ambitions to continue to, that asset as a YMCA, the Greater Cleveland YMCA. Tim, who is our executive director, you've met many of the volunteers over the times that we've been here before the school board, meeting with you related to the YMCA. Our goal, no different than when we started in this region in 2006, 2005, is to make sure that we are a community-based, community-supported, volunteer-led, and driven local organization that really sets its focus on meeting the needs of the community. So the local board, along with the executive director, define within the broader criteria, what is it that this community needs? So when we kind of got engaged out here, the big area that focused for the Vermillion Y was childcare. That continues to be an area of focus. Matter of fact, as the state has changed up their criteria for childcare services from three-star to five-star, one of the things that we have as a major focus is to work on closing what we call the achievement gap. It's a big focus of the Y nationally, and we want to make sure that all our preschool and our after-school programs are doing two major things, and we want to make sure we do them here in concert with the school board, along with the community. One is to make sure that summer learning laws that occurs in many areas, in both urban and rural areas, we want to make sure that we continue to enhance that area, and we have a major focus that we'd like to begin next summer. It won't be begin this summer, as we're beginning to gear up to do that. And then, in terms of preschool and early childhood learning, we're trying to make sure we continue to not only become five-star, but may say, I always get that word wrong. I did get it right this time, Joe. Certified, because that means that you really have a very strong preschool or early childhood starting program. So that's continued to be a focus for us. When we talk about the Vermillion YMCA, one of the things that we have been focusing on, and is part of this presentation, we have to do some upgrades to the building. So, one of the things that we talk about is communication. It is an old system, and we are, actually had our guys out here looking at it. It doesn't communicate to our central location around program registration, membership registration. So, all that outdated stuff is gonna be replaced. We're talking about lighting, electrical, electrical panels have to be upgraded and replaced. So we've actually, Joe Sertie, who is our VP of Branch Operations, has done some assessment with a lot of folks related to our buildings and our building needs. This is some of the current building needs that we gotta have here at the Vermillion YMCA. Signage, we have been branding for the last five years, as we have new signage and branding from a national organization. You actually have very old signs, not even up to, I think, 2000. So we have to bring you up even closer to that. So we're looking at the signage, we gotta update the signage. The next photo we're talking about is playgrounds, upgrading of sports fields and playgrounds. We're looking at that now, and we're trying to figure out how we can best get that accomplished, especially when you get into playground equipment. You talk about the average playground replacement of equipment, it's anywhere between 23 and $35,000. It is not a cheap endeavor, because you've gotta have all the safety features that goes along with that. The next piece that we're looking at in terms of air conditioning is we want to get rid of all the units out of the windows and look at a rooftop unit. We actually just replaced one of the units on the building. It was about $21,000 for that. Oh, I'm sorry.
That one was five.
$5,000 for that unit. We've got more work to do in the air conditioning. And then the next slide, we're looking at the windows to replace the windows. You've got all the verbiage behind what it means that I've given you in the PowerPoint slide, but that's one of the other things we're looking at. And then, we've got to look at the doors and replacing the doors and door frames on the building, the security, safety, and the whole nine yards there. Some of the things that we've already done to the updates of the buildings, we've already replaced a boiler. We repaired and replaced circulation pumps for the heat pump. Repaired one of the roof AC units. Removed giant 100-foot falling tree that was in the yard, or something that happened there. Replaced the light fixtures and balances in some of the areas that we had to upgrade anyway to do. Replaced restroom fixtures and snake plumbing line because they had some issues there. We've also invested, that was about $21,000, $22,000 of work. We've also invested, already have invested in $25,000 of upgrades of equipment. So that will continue. Our goal for the Vermillion YMCA is to be a strong community partner. One of the things that, as I was very impressed with the young people that were speaking tonight, we just took 475 kids to Columbus. We have a youth and government program. I noticed we don't have one here. And I had asked Tim, I said, "Do we have youth and government here?" He said, "No, gotta work on that." Well, we just took all these kids to Columbus, was it last weekend, Joe?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And what was impressive with the young man is, is when kids get involved early, they stay involved lifelong. They just don't forget about that experience. And that's where we think we bring great values, bringing this broader breadth of understanding and experience. And then we connect young people, not only to their community, but we could, just like you're taking thirty-some kids down to your conference, we connect them to kids from all over the state, then eventually all over this country. One of the kids in one of the groups that was in Columbus, and I just have to share this because it reminds me of the story here, is that there was a kid that's in one of our programs who came out of foster care. And you'll be surprised at the number of legislators that listen to young people and show up at those sessions. And one of the bills that he had had that went through the youth legislature conference had to do with kids aging out of foster care, which is a big issue in this state, a big issue in this state. And his bill, or that person's bill, got all the way through, and some senator saw that and asked to speak with that young man, because they're working on, actually in Ohio, legislation around kids aging out of foster care, because they're eighteen, technically they're adults, but we all know as parents, they're not ready to get on to the real world. So how do we help those young people? So, those are the kind of things that we want to be, when we talk about a YMCA in this community. We want to be community-focused, community-driven, community-invested, and make the kinds of investment in that asset to not only make it what it is today, but to make it a better building for the future. And that's what our goal and ambition and desire is to be here, is to be a community partner, not only with the community, but with other agencies in the community, and making sure this community is strong and that it is prosperous, that young people succeed in life.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
You know, I just appreciate you guys coming out. I think it was, it was nice to hear your guys' opinion, how valuable Vermillion is to you guys. I mean, we feel the same way that the YMCA is a valuable part of our community, and as we debated the sale of the property, we just want to make sure that two years from now, it's not an abandoned building.
It will not be, sir.
So.
You have my commitment and promise on that. It will be a lively, thriving, engaged building for people that participate in program, and we're looking to be a long-term community, not an overnight one.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we are going to move in, move on to item number nine, which is going to be a brief executive session. I don't anticipate it taking more than five, 10 minutes. Yes?
I want to compliment the young man that did this project. I think that sort of, if you were to have him in my classroom, you might have moved him. I actually did, so, just makes me feel terrific that young people have an experience. I don't know where, Ben won't know where. I think, a couple things about Jack I forgot to mention.
Can you hang on to open, public participation?
Well, I'm afraid we'll do that right.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we're gonna have a long night. There'd be a brief executive session, we'll come right back. Okay? It should be quick. All right? I'd like to recommend a resolution moving to executive session for the purpose of sale of public property.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Seven forty is our time now. Hey, we're gonna move back into regular session here. We're gonna move back into regular session at 7:44. And with that, we are going to move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is recommend a resolution to accept the $100,000 bid of the YMCA of Greater Cleveland for the property on the terms originally presented in connection with the auction of the property located at Aldrich, located at 320 Aldrich Road, Vermillion, Ohio, and to authorize the board president, superintendent, and/or treasurer to do all things necessary and consistent with his resolution to close the sale of the property to the purchaser, and to authorize and direct the board president and treasurer to sign the deed as necessary to convey the property to the purchaser at closing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Gentlemen from the YMCA, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to a thriving YMCA.
Thank you.
Excellent, sir, thank you.
Thank you, guys. With that, we will move on to item number nine, public participation. Do we have anybody?
I just wanted to add, Mr. Armstrong's list, you gave me about five minutes to think about that. After he retired, he and his wife, it was in the, trying to look at these.
Peace Corps?
Peace Corps.
Peace Corps?
I think he was in the Peace Corps, yeah.
That's good.
He was in the Caribbean, and they didn't feed them very well. And he complained to me when he came back that all he had was a peanut butter. So, we sent an awful lot of books with him that I'm sure were beautiful. I just don't know where he got all his energy. Dominating for mankind.
Yeah.
He's a good guy.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Healy?
Yes, I just want to thank the board, board president, board members, and treasurer. Thank you for your vote of confidence in the YMCA, and you will not mention that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your vote of confidence in the community. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we will move on to item number 12, reports, and we'll start with our treasurer's report.
All right, I'm gonna start discussing the month of March 2014. How the month of March ended year-to-date versus last year. On the revenue side, we're unfortunately down about $489,000 in real estate taxes from this year over last year. On the personal property tax side, we are also unfortunately down about $177,000 year-to-year from March of '14 to March of '13. A lot of this goes back into the timing situation. You remember last month, we were down, unfortunately, because I hadn't received the property tax revenue when I anticipated it was gonna come in. I ended up picking it up in the month of March, and I, there's still like a couple straggling payments out there. I know, because I've already received them in April. So, this will, this will fluctuate a little bit, but it is important to keep note, because property tax revenue and state foundation are the two key areas of revenue for this district. On the plus side, state foundation revenue was up $177,000 year-to-date, signified here over that. Homestead and rollback was flat, basically, year-to-date. Other state revenue was up about $79,000. However, that really was a coding change in the last biennial budget, in terms of them specializing revenue that can only be spent for certain means, such as special ad, transportation. Special ad got coded now as special revenue, and it previously was not, so that accounts for the change there. The other thing on here was other local revenue is down about $36,000 year-to-date from the previous year. And overall, we're unfortunately down 2% if you look at last month's, or last March's figures, and that 2% equals $394,000 down in revenue. On the expenditure side, good news is that salaries were down $210,000 from where they were last year at this time. Benefits are flat, or benefits are slightly up, sorry, $100,000 over last year. Purchased services unfortunately are up $217,000. Purchased services are things like your utilities, your garbage, your ESC costs. Supplies and materials are down $167,000, but equipment costs unfortunately, the next line down, are up $110,000. Non-operating expenses are up $305,000. Non-operating expenses are up three hundred and five thousand dollars, but the majority of that cost is the interest payment on the COPS financing for the project. You paid that in December of last year for the first time, and that will be something that will continue as we progress forward. Overall, unfortunately, expenses are up three hundred and thirty-eight thousand from the previous March. As I look at where we are, remember I like to do a thirteen-month window to kind of see where we were last month or last March, where we are with this March. Revenue-wise, you can tell we're slightly down from where we were last March, but we are, you know, we're the Cedar Point roller coaster when it comes to revenue generation, and we're approaching the top of the hill and look to go across the hill and take that fun ride down for a couple months until we get our next tax revenue. Looking at true cash days, kind of where we were, remember this is what our daily expenditures are, and if we stop bringing in anything, how many days could we cease to, or how many days could we operate before we ran out of money? We were at three hundred and eighteen last year at this time, and unfortunately now we're at two hundred and ninety-six. Should we cease? But again, again, a cyclical pattern. We are at the top of our hill, and as it trends forward and this data gets moved out, you should see that we'll be going back down and then back up again. When we look at revenue expended versus salaries and benefits, and then a percentage of total expenditures, we've been doing really well. We stay in that seventy, low seventy range in terms of our salaries and fringes of the percentage of total expenditures. That's in line for your typical school district. When we look at total revenue expended, we're at eighty-three percent. We have been running higher figures because our expenses were outpacing our revenue on a monthly basis. But because we got a giant tax revenue check, our revenue obviously outpaced our expenditures for March. And that's typical if you look at last March to this March. Where we were, kind of how I judge myself estimate-wise. Remember last month I was off because I thought tax revenue was gonna come in. Did a little bit better this month, still kind of a wide gap in my opinion for myself. But I will hopefully get better this as time goes on. And so, you know, about five hundred thousand off on what I estimated versus where we actually ended up. Same thing with expenses, a little bit better here. I still seem to be underestimating expenses, but you know, this would be my, really my third full month here, so I'm hoping that as time goes on, I'll be able to tighten those up even more. But that's where we ended up with March. Any questions?
And then for the rest, for my actual review of the March data, and then officially approve the February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen financial reports that were previously provided.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Item three, I recommend a resolution to accept the following donations. Toner cartridges valued at three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars from Lake Business Products. One thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars from the Erie County Community Foundation to be placed in the Vermillion Local School District Scholarship Fund. And seven thousand dollars to the Jack Armstrong Scholarship Fund from Jeffrey R. Armstrong.
I'll second.
I'd just like to thank, it's like every month we have donations on here, and it's, I think we're all very grateful for the donations that come in. So, thanks.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Item three, or sorry, item four, recommend a resolution to approve the following fundraisers in accordance with policy fifty-eight thirty. First one is Prom to Dawn Gift Card Solicitation from Area Businesses, March twenty-fourth to May second, two thousand and fourteen. And the Boys Soccer Fish Fry, August first to September twelfth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second.
Just a question on the fish fry, is that like multiple dates? Is that why it's August first to September twelfth?
Is that usually?
It's just one day, that's when they're selling the fish.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It's like a Friday night they usually have it in it, before, okay. How are we monitoring fundraisers? Are we on par with the last couple years, above, low, as far as the number?
You know, I don't know that we, until we made this resolution, start tracking them. I don't know that we have previous data outside of, at least not concrete data.
Got actual numbers, I think we, yeah.
Are the, are the sports teams working with the Booster Club?
They are. And that's something we will do though now, if that's the expectation, is to start monitoring it and tracking it so we know.
Yeah, which, you know, I think the ultimate goal was to reduce them and make sure we don't have a lot of overlap and all those kind of good things. But I haven't seen that many come in. I think we've had two a month.
No, there hasn't been.
Alright, good. Anything else, any comments? Call the roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Nope, that is it.
With that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, normally on Thursday, I give a update to the board, but knowing that this board meeting was coming today, I held off on the Thursday report that I usually give you in writing. And the board has asked for an update, not just on the new elementary school, but they've also asked for any work that's taking place on the rehab for the middle school or the high schools. So, I'm gonna quickly go through a list here and just give you an idea of what's happening with the new facility. Masonery work is continuing in the office area and the first grade classroom wings. The electrical and plumbing rough-ins also are continuing in the walls. The masonry block work is approximately sixty-five percent complete, so as the weather has warmed up here, you can really see the physical progress taking place with that block and it's starting to take shape as a school. Structural steel is continuing in the office area and the areas being detailed. The metal decks being installed, and the metal decks also being installed in the mezzanine area above the office area. Air handling units have been delivered or in place, so those were sitting at the east end of the property for a while there, and now they're starting to be put into place. Mechanical hangers are being installed where the decking is being complete. Electrical underground rough-ins continuing, and electricians are continuing to pull wire in office areas and third grade classroom areas. Installation of site storm drains on the north elevation is continuing. The technology package is going to go out for bid here in the next two weeks. Furniture package is going to be finalized in May. You saw some of that furniture package and some of the color selections at the last board meeting. The scheduled work that's supposed to take place over the next two weeks include the masonry, which is sixty-five percent complete now. Continue with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Pour the floors in the second and third grade classroom areas. Continue the site storm drains around the building. Begin the damp proofing and face brick at the exterior that's dependent on the building drying out. Begin the roofing at the office areas if the weather cooperates. Just a quick comment then about the middle school. We were expecting that there was supposed to be some waterproofing that was gonna take place in the springtime, right at the spring break, and that did not take place because they're still looking at some, at the completion of the paperwork for the materials that go into that project. So, they need to get some approvals on some of those materials. As soon as they get that approved, that waterproofing will take place around the middle school. As far as the high school and the middle school updates, the phase-two project was bid and is ready for board approval tonight. And that includes work in the north classrooms and the art area and the new board office. Replacement of light ballast took place over the spring break, and that work is almost seventy percent complete at the high school. Shop drawings are being submitted for the work that's going to be completed in the summer now, so they're working on those shop drawings. And the contractor did initiate a claim for thirty-three days of being behind schedule, and Lesko and Greenspace are working on a schedule now that can catch them up on those thirty-three days. So, they're hopeful that that's going to happen now with the warm weather, so. That pretty much brings us up to date as to what's going on with the project right now, both at the new facility and for the renovations. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Did we make it through the winter, okay? I know we poured masonry at the elementary school just prior to winter. Did we make it through without damage? Did all the masonry hold up?
Yeah, the pour was fine. I've been looking at some of the reports. They had some minor damage issues that wasn't really weather-related, but equipment-related, that, for example, because of slippery conditions, they ran the equipment into some of the block by accident, and they noted all of that. Greenspace is on top of that work. And that's pretty normal, though, in a construction site of this size with the magnitude that it is. There's really been nothing major that's occurred. But I did look at that and became a little bit alarmed myself, but when I was, when I got the explanation from Tim Marini from Greenspace, he says, "Don't worry, that's normal," and we've noted all that. That's being repaired by the contractors, and it's no issue.
Okay. I was just concerned with the extreme weather we had this winter. I know we didn't quite get to where we wanted to construction-wise.
Yeah, and they're doing those pours now, so that was part of the thirty-three days that they were concerned about, that now they're really working hard to catch those days up and make sure that they take care of some of those things that weren't able to get done. I know that they had a area of that concrete that was supposed to be poured at one time, but couldn't do it, and they had a straw base put down and had to wait.
Gotcha. So, at this point, I know they're working on a makeup plan, but we don't have any reason to believe yet that the Christmas holiday move-in next year is in jeopardy?
Not yet. We're believe that they're pushing hard to make sure that that gets accomplished because that's a major issue for us to get those teachers moved in and make sure that that move will be as comfortable as we can during that break time.
I think we had about forty-five days in there of buffer. It's gonna be close.
Right.
Okay. One other thing you touched on, light ballast at the high school. Is that, was it two, three years ago that we replaced or we installed motion detectors in all the classroom? Does the replacement of ballast affect that at all?
No, those will work in unison with those same switches. I think that those were actually replaced when I just came in, so that's been about six years now that they've been in, but they're working in unison. It's not going to negatively impact them. They don't have to change those out.
Tom, is that a good question? Ballast versus motion detectors, is there any bearing there?
No, we're using UltraMats ballast to do reflectors. So, the UltraMats reflectors are just working extremely swiftly, existing motion sensors.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to be sure. I know we made a big investment in that a couple of years ago. Okay, thanks.
Okay, the next item on my agenda here, number two, is the phase-three facility improvements. And I'll just start us off with that discussion, and then I know Mr. Dawson and Mrs. Ennis want to make a comment about it. Our, as you, as you see on the agenda tonight, we're approving the phase-two now bids that came in. And we have been extremely fortunate with this project. The architect, the Greenspace, has been amazed at the way that the bids have come in and allowed us to take on work that we never expected would happen. And at the last board meeting, myself and Mr. Dawson really made recommendations or were concerned about the cost of the project going forward and what we would be able to do with the money, and how far it would take us, and what were the options and possibilities. Well, that was before this phase of this bid came in. And once again, it came in six hundred thousand dollars approximately to our favor and really changes the parameters of what we're able to do with this project. And one of the things, though, that has been in this project from the start was having to do some renovations with the music wing. And that music wing is going to get done. That was a key component of the project. In order, though, for that music wing to take place, we had to move the weight room, which is down on the northwest corner of the building. That weight room has always been misplaced and kind of moved around the building to various locations. And one of the things that we said needed to have to happen irregardless of this project because we felt that it was an academic initiative and it was good for the music program, was to renovate that wing. But the only way to do it was to move that weight room and make room for the music people to expand their operations and improve things. So, with that being said, we were looking at the possibility, not the possibility, the necessity, to move that to outside of the building as a separate structure. And that separate structure was going to be built right outside the gym. And we started to look at pricing, and we looked at size. Originally, we looked at two thousand nine hundred square foot, which was a connector, and a, just a connector, a little corridor, and the same-sized weight room that was going to be in that, compared to the weight room that was already there down on that corner. That's not a real big weight room. So, we also then decided, can we expand that just a little bit and not put something under roof that wasn't going to make sense at all, and have an exercise area slash batting cage multipurpose room expanded to three thousand eight hundred square foot, which is still not really big to be put under roof? The intention was to go ahead with that structure, but that was going to cost us eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I'm really recommending tonight that we reconsider that because now that this bid has come back in at six hundred thousand dollars to our favor, we can just about triple the square foot. We can go up to a twelve thousand nine hundred square foot structure, maybe even a little bit larger than that, connect some storage onto it, do more with it, and that would cost us about four hundred thousand dollars more. And it would be a much more useful structure with a lot more square foot. So, I know that you wanted to make, both of you wanted to make a little bit more comments about what the original intention of this was and to talk about that.
Yeah. I think like I mentioned at the meeting last week, that the original intent of the whole project was to consolidate the campus with the intent of reducing operational expenses to save money. But that, I think the game has changed a little bit since then based on the prices that have come in. So, we're talking about the fieldhouse. I definitely see the need and and I understand the argument of putting it over there. I just want to make sure that we understand that the original intent of this was to reduce operational expenses. But like I said, since that was the original intent, but that whole, I think we've gone through with our, with the bids and everything coming in less, we've gone through our needs list. And I think the last item on that needs list was the weight room. And now, with the additional money sitting there, I think you've kind of blended the need of the weight room into a want of a fieldhouse, which is, as long as the rest of the needs are done, I guess, like I said, I can see the value in it.
I think a major point that needs to be brought up about this is, even though our enrollment has declined, if you look at what the Ohio School Facilities Commission does now when they come in to evaluate buildings, they look at the number of students there are in the building, and then they calculate out what the square footage is needed per student. And the last, more than the last one hundred buildings that have been built by the Ohio School Facilities Commission that are approximately the same size as us include the building of an auxiliary gym. So, what I want to emphasize is, we're not overbuilding something here. This is something that is really required and needed for the number of students that we have in our building right now. It's not, it's not like we're overkilling something and trying to purposely build something large just for the sake of athletics. And another thing to point out here is that this is not just an athletic building. And another thing to point out here is that this is not just an athletic building. It's a building that's designed, that will be designed for multi-purpose, multi-uses. The band will be able to come in there, they'll be able to do, they'll be able to get out of the rain, they'll be able to practice, because it will be a sizable structure. It would be the in-size size of a, of a full, of a full-size gym, a full-size basketball court, if you could picture what that looks like. So that gives them quite a bit of indoor space to be able to use, and it just could be used for a variety of purposes. The intent would be for people to be able to walk around the outside of the perimeter of that area and walk. So I think that I've heard that the board has talked about the community being able to come in at various times and use that facility for that purpose. I know that that's not all that it's designated for, but it offers an advantage. So I really just wanted to emphasize that OSFC issue and the size of it, we're not building something that is more than what we need. It is what we need in terms of usage. We don't really have enough space, and this would offer a lot of options and a lot of opportunities for our students and the community to go forward. And if you're looking at putting eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into a building that's connected right next to you, and you're getting three thousand eight hundred square foot, and you can go to twelve thousand nine hundred square foot or more, I'm believing we could even go a little bit more than that, it just makes sense that we're going to make a slightly larger investment, and hopefully, still, at the end of the day, when all is said and done, there will be a little bit left of a, of a balance, that you'll be able to do some other things. When you said, "Is everything totally done?" I don't, I, there's always little things that we'll be able to do that can be possibly added, but we'll look at what this bid comes in at again and see whether or not that that looks like a possibility.
I think, would you have anything else for that?
I think Phil touched on most of it, but just again, back to the needs versus wants. I just wanted people to realize that that weight room is a need, because in order to expand the music program, you've got to put a weight room somewhere. And so that, and we also talked about a need over by the soccer field is restrooms. We've never had full restrooms. We've got porta-potties, and we have visiting teams. I'm embarrassed. The handicap, it's just, it's, it could be much better.
It's a great opportunity to provide services over in that area, softball, baseball, soccer fields.
You've got it cross-country. So if we were just to build restrooms over there, that's over a hundred thousand. So if you take that plus the separate little weight room of thirty-nine hundred square feet, you're near a million. So for a one-point-one, you're gonna get a facility that's three times the size, you've got the restrooms, you're getting more bang for your buck, is what it is.
One of the options, as we're talking, this is something we're gonna do with, I term this as extra money. We didn't plan on doing this. This is money that's extra now, because everything else came in underbid. I think one of the options that we discussed early on, if we had extra money, was to maybe pay some back towards the principal, and I think with some research, we found out that is not an option.
Correct, yeah. The, we, the district cannot make an early payment on the bonds or the notes until December of 2021, so a little over seven years, and if we would pay it to the trustee, it just sits there doing nothing. And the only other option is a refunding or a refinancing opportunity, but that doesn't involve any of the money to be paid back, it simply is refinancing the current notes at a lower rate.
So I mean, so that really takes that out as an option. So what are you asking us tonight to say, "Yeah, we're on board," and just to go out and start the drawing process and write up bids and then see what they come back at?
I'd like to hear a confirmation from the board that that's what you're willing to, to consider the best option at this point. That way, we can go back to the architect and we can say to them, "Keep moving, keep the timeline moving, but keep it moving for a fieldhouse rather than just that three thousand eight hundred square foot facility that we originally thought we could do or were going to do based on the funds that we had at the time." If I could just, I want to emphasize one more issue about this that has come up or has been discussed, and that's the wants versus the needs and what was originally said to the staff and the timeline of this. One thing that we have to remember is that this is on an extremely accelerated timeline, and all of this is taking place with bids and with a fast-moving, fast-paced timeline, and we're discovering then that we're coming up with more than we ever thought we were going to be able to do. And one of the things that we did do when we went to the staff originally was tell them, "It doesn't look like we have this much money, and these are more needs that we're asking you to assess than wants." So I do want to emphasize that that's what was said to the staff, but, and it's almost impossible at times to get the whole staff's input on this. You'd like to try to survey everybody, and you'd like to try to ask the individual opinion of every staff member, but it becomes impossible to do. So you, these are some decisions sometimes that have to be made that we didn't count on, but I see them as positives, because we never expected to be able to do what we've been able to do with this project, ever.
Right.
And they came in, the architects themselves, telling us that we're paying forty-five dollars a square foot. That's unheard of. It's just the pricing is amazing that's come in. So we're, I think we're very fortunate, and the last thing to emphasize is, once again, we're not going to the taxpayers and asking them for more money for this. This is all part of the original plan. This is all part of the original project. It's all being funded under that original COPS financing, that we're not going back to the taxpayers and saying, "We need to ask you for more money. We're expecting you to pay for this." We're not. This is going to be self-funded. We're not, it's all funded by that project, original project, and we believe that we'll have the money to continue to operate it, and it won't be an issue.
I mean, it's, it's kind of funny. I mean, we sit back and we're having these debates now. I mean, this is a good thing. I mean, we went to the professionals and said, "Hey, it's gonna cost twenty million dollars to build the elementary school, do some minor repairs to sail away and some minor repairs to the high school." All of a sudden, all that came in at like thirteen million dollars. So we're sitting here with seven extra million dollars because of our luck with the economy and the pricing that came in, and we're trying to...
Timing could not have been more perfect.
Right.
And the pricing that we're getting is absolutely amazing.
Right. So I think you ballparked with the architects, what you're looking to do is about one-point-one million?
Well, that's the very basics. Now, we'll have to decide if we want to do just some very basic parking, not to add much to it, gravel the parking, that type of thing, but very, yeah, basically, that's the ballpark.
And I think last meeting, when we talked, I think you, we, so the balance was like one and a half that we didn't have encumbered?
Right. So that was leaving a, like a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar balance, I believe.
That's on top of, there's contingency money out there as well. So we had a one and a half unencumbered towards phases. So I guess I would be okay with you moving forward to get the plans drawn and get the bids out. I guess if the bids come back and, you know, I think we're estimating now at a lower cost based on the other phases, but if this comes back in closer to the seventy or ninety dollars a square foot, we're not gonna afford to do it. But if it comes in at the same dollar amount per square foot, I think we can make this happen.
And I, if I'm not mistaken, though, what they did calculate it on is, they still calculated it on a higher estimate of cost per square foot. They're still not calculating that on the forty-five dollars that they're getting. Whatever it costs to build that, that steel structure is the going rate of what that will cost, and that's not just totally steel either. That would be a ten-foot concrete split-face block surrounding that entire structure, which would make it a pretty solid, nice-looking structure.
We all...
Yeah, I'm in agreement too.
So I don't think there's a motion to be had, because we're just saying, "Hey, go out and get the plans." I think the motion would be when the bids come back in. But, you know, I think my original stance, I just want to say it again, was this whole project, and I was on board from day one, was because we're trying to reduce operational expenses, but I think the game has now changed because of how much extra money we've had. I don't think, you know, talking to, you know, you guys and your staff and listening to recommendations, this is completely out of the original scope of cost, you know, this is gonna cost a little bit extra in operations, but I think from what you're telling us, that may be warranted.
And it still incorporates want, I mean, or need, I mean.
Yeah.
We need the weight room, we need...
It has to be done.
It's gotta be done.
In order for the, that music wing renovation, it's not a choice.
It's not one-point-one million or zero. It's, you're gonna be spending, close to nine hundred thousand on a weight room. So do we just, again?
Add another twenty, fifteen percent on and move it across the street. Have more use out of it. You guys have any feedback?
No, I just think it's important, you know, Phil did make the point that we don't think operating the facility will be a drain on the, on the district, you know? It's something that we can manage.
Ryan, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable, yes.
And that's just not the day-to-day upkeep. That's, we're gonna have a new building sitting over there, so it's siding and roofing and cleaning and repairs to the gravel parking lot and the sidewalks and...
Okay, I'll let the architect know, and I probably will need a couple of you, though, to be working with me to work on the tweaks of what that looks like. So I'll be contacting two board members to assist with that in the next couple of days. So for, in order for those drawings to be put back together and be submitted, I'm gonna need a little bit of help with that.
Okay. You guys good with that?
Yep, sounds good.
Phil?
Okay, the next item is open enrollments, and I just put this on the report at the last board meeting. I think we had a pretty extensive conversation about the option of opening, opening enrollment to the state and going ahead with this this year. We had said that we were very close to doing it last year, and this is the time of year that we usually look at this and decide whether or not we should. I just wanted to know if there was any other questions, if there wasn't, anything that wasn't answered at the last board meeting on this topic, but I would like us to go ahead. It is on the consent agenda for us to approve it. I did say that we do have some, we do have some, if it doesn't work out, we can cancel it out at one, at, for the next year, and there are, within our, our forms and paperwork, the possibility to say that if a student has some real issues, then obviously, we don't have to accept that student.
And we can cap it at a certain level, right?
Right.
That's right. It's all dependent upon what's in the buildings in terms of availability of space and programs.
Right.
And if we don't currently provide services for what that student needs, we are not required to add that.
Any special needs that we don't supply are not required then by us as a district to service.
So you solely retain the right as a board to reject any applications that come in based on requirements or what we don't have or, or student problems with, with their kids wanting to come in, discipline problems?
There, there, I mean, you, there are specific requirements that we have to fulfill, and they're all within the open enrollment form. So you can't, we can't just reject them without reason, but there are specific guidelines that have to be followed. But what I'm saying is, there are some options within those guidelines that, for example, if a student is expelled, that would be a criteria that we would not have to accept the student.
Do you have an idea of how many kids we can accept at each building?
Because the enrollment fluctuates, what I want to be sure we're doing, especially at the beginning of next year, is looking at our numbers again, see who went out, and look and sit with each principal and say, "Okay, what can you do at the kindergarten level? What can you do at the fourth grade level? What can you do at the ninth grade level?" And be sure of what our numbers are before we do anything. So we'll be cautious, and it's, our Vermillion students come first with this. We want to be sure that we're not doing anything to the detriment of our own students, because that would defy common sense and logic for us as a board.
I have been a big proponent of just the contiguous districts for probably the last five or six years, but hearing the numbers that Ryan gave us about a month ago, telling us we're a couple hundred thousand dollars in the hole on open enrollment, going out versus coming in, I think we've got to do something to try to recoup some of that revenue. And if it doesn't work out after a year, we pull the plug on it.
Right.
Yeah, that was the thing that we did discuss at the last board meeting that was the major turning point in this, is the finances. I agree. Okay, if there's no more questions, then we have that on the consent agenda. I'll go on to the next item then.
Actually, it's...
Oh, we do have it, sorry.
Thanks, Michael.
Superintendent's report, item number four. I'd like to recommend a resolution to approve open enrollment policy to permit enrollment of students from all other districts in Ohio in accordance with state law.
I'll move.
A second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Hayromil?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Okay, just, it's not, there's two items that are not numbered here, but I just want to remind the community that there's a security meeting this Wednesday at six-thirty at the high school, and that will be to discuss what we're doing with security in the buildings, and that will be led by Mr. Bender and Mr. Atkins from the community. They will be there to discuss on behalf of the community and the school district what we're doing, how things are going, what might not, what might need to be improved, and the possibility that we will talk about that security bond that our board was instrumental in getting passed through legislation. That will be part of the discussion that evening and decide how and what we want to do in the future. So that's this Wednesday night. Okay, the last item on my agenda, and I noticed that we did not pull this off the consent agenda, and she's here tonight. Lindsay Holman is a, a new teacher. She's been, going to be recommended this evening to be hired by our school district as an intervention specialist, and it's a tradition now that we ask the new teachers to come up or the new staff members to come up and just tell us a little bit about yourself. So if you wouldn't mind coming up for just a minute, Lindsay, and telling us about yourself, your background, what you're going to be doing, and if the board has any quick questions, we'll make it painless for you.
Okay, great. I'm Lindsay Holman. My husband Kyle is back early. We have a five-year-old daughter we live in Huron, and I'm coming from, my experience is a year at Sandusky High School, government and economics, co-teaching the mainstream setting. I've spent the last three years at the Perkins Local Schools in a moderate to intensive classroom with a focus on autism and significant behaviors, and I am coming to Vermillion after being at this meeting very excited with, with the kids and everything that's going on. It's just, it's really exciting to be here. So I'm very excited. I'm almost positive that I'll be at the high school and qualified to teach anything K through twelve. So wherever I need it.
You have, you had a really great interview, and you did a demonstration lesson for us that was top-notch, and we really have confidence in your, your education, your background, the fact that you were really in an intense intervention area, and we're just really positive that you're going to make a major impact, so we're happy to have you in the school district.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next up, we've got item thirteen, the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend to, recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted under one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent request that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. I'm just gonna run through the list as is, and after I'm done reading this, if there's anybody that wants anything removed, we can remove it at that point after we read it.
Do you have to read through all those, or can you just say it's written?
Yeah. I'll, I'll touch on some of these, but there's a lot here. A is review the April fifteenth board meeting minutes. B is approve minutes of board meetings as follows. Regular meeting from March tenth, special meeting March twenty-fourth, and special meeting April seventh, all of two thousand fourteen. C is the, approve the two thousand fourteen, fifteen multi-agreement, multi-agreement contract with North Point Educational Service Center. D is approve the two thousand fourteen, fifteen multi-agreement contract with... D is approve the 2014-15 multi-agreement contract with Educational Service Center of Lorain County. E is approve service agreement with Educational Service Center of Lorain County for speech, language, and pathologist services through June 30th of 2014. F is to approve interagency agreement with Lorain County Children and Families Council for the 2014-15 contract year. G is to approve revisions to the 14, 2015 school calendar. H is to approve handbooks and salary ranges for secretaries, supervisors, and administrators as previously provided. I has approved sailor marching band trip to Disney World, um, from April 22nd through April 24th of 2015. The students will miss three days of school. J is to approve recommendation of green space construction services to accept the bid from RFC Contracting, Inc. for the amount of 648,000 for Vermillion High School renovations, Phase Two. K, here's where I'm not gonna read them all. We've got a pretty yeah, extensive list of employment actions, um, ranging from one-year limiteds to continuing contracts, limited contracts. You guys want me to read all those? Are you guys okay with them? I may need another bottle of water if I tackle those. Uh, with that, we will move on to item 14, which is items to be removed from the consent agenda. I would like to, right now, remove for discussion, H, J, and there's a section under K on the second page that says, um, about halfway through, it says, "Two-year administrative or supervisor contracts for the 14-15 contract year." Starting above the two-year and going down through Carol Hyde. Is that on the same page? So it's H, J, and the section on the second page.
Can I add, if you're gonna pull all of H?
Yes.
That you pull a one-year limited classified contract?
Well, this is for discussion right now.
All right.
H, J, section. Pardon? H.
J.
This is for discussion right now. H, J, and a section of, on the second page of where it says two-year. On the second page of contracts. From the bottom, about in the middle, okay? Discussion on H, I would like to, um, move the, remove the administrator portion of H from that. Well, actually, we gotta go back and approve, I'm sorry, we need to approve the other, the other part of the consent agenda. Anybody else wanna remove anything else?
No.
You okay with that? So once again, we remove H, J, and the two-year administrative section of the contracts. Okay? Do you have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Okay, back to the items we removed. Um, H was approve handbooks and salary ranges for secretaries, supervisors, and administrators as previously provided. I, I'd like to, um, change the wording there to remove the administrators from that. Any feedback, Grant?
Good.
Okay, so there's no other feedback. I'd like to make a motion to approve handbooks and salary ranges for secretaries and supervisors as previously provided. Move?
I'll move.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
And Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
On J, um, I, I noticed that, that was not on the one that came out earlier in the week, and the email, it looks like somebody stuck that in there. That's, I don't think that was 648,000 dollar approval on the consent agenda, wasn't okay. So we need to make sure that stuff doesn't get on there. This is for Phase Two, which is the academy area, the board office area into the music renovated area. Okay? So with that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the recommendation of green space construction services to accept a bid from RFC Contracting in the amount of 648,000 dollars for the Vermillion High School renovations, Phase Two.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to reiterate, um, this bid came in at 648,000. What was originally estimated for this part of the project, Phil?
I think it was like 1.2 million, 2, 2, 4, 5, I think.
Significant amount of good news.
Right.
Yeah, almost half of what we thought it would be.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. The section I removed on the second page is in connection with the wording that we changed on H. So. Item 15, public participation. Anybody else got, yes?
I missed three board meetings. The last regularly one, regularly scheduled one, I had a, uh, invitation from the archival society to talk about the Vermillion schools, and it was a lot of fun. But I missed the board meeting, the two specials I didn't know about. Not your fault. There are a couple of things that I'd like to comment on. There's a lot of talk around town about what, um, the field house would be. People are talking about venues with gyms and things like some communities have. That's not true, I know. But, uh, you're gonna have to communicate a little bit better because we have people that are thinking that we're building another huge gym out in the middle of, uh, the complex. So that's only what I've heard. I had mixed feelings at first about even what you're talking about, but I see the need.
I think, Mr. Smith, I, I think we've got an idea of what we're looking at, but there's no blueprints or anything yet. So I think once the blueprints are out, I'm sure we'll.
We'll have a, that's what we'll be working on in the next few days as to what that will look like. And at the last board meeting, we did talk, we did emphasize the fact that that's not a basketball court that we're just setting that up for. It's multi-purpose. Will basketball hoops be eventually put there? Perhaps. But that's not the only intention of that, is to make that strictly a basketball court.
Well, I had mentioned before, rumors kill us. And, you know, about the third tier, then that's the absolute truth, and I don't know how you calm that, that. Newspapers bless their heart, can't put everything down. I'm afraid that not too many people watch it on TV. It's too boring. And the quality is not that good. But anyhow, I don't know how we communicate.
I think the important thing to remember is we haven't voted on anything, and once we see some plans and once we have an idea of what this might look like and what it could provide, we'll be able to communicate a lot more effectively.
True. The only reason I know is because I try to keep up on it. What else did I want to mention? Oh, you keep talking about auxiliary gyms. I don't think this generation knows that the wrestling deck was called the auxiliary gym. And in the junior high, the elevated one also was called an auxiliary gym. The wrestlers took over the one in the high school because it was so difficult to move the mats up and down and around and store them and all that. And, um, of course, before I left, but, um, we do have on blueprints, auxiliary gyms. Where some of the, these things are gonna be located. West of the gymnasium complex was to be a possible future auditorium swimming pool. I don't think we should block that. I know they're expensive to maintain, but there are people in town. And I tend to agree that we need a swimming pool in the, um, schools to teach safety. I mean, we've got a river and a lake, but I'm sure that's gotta be down the line. And I don't expect you to use your savings in the, uh, this project to do that. But it's a possibility sometime, probably after I'm gone. Broken records, no. When you're having this extra money, I certainly hope, and maybe you discussed it, 'cause I missed some, for shops and home economic, uh, facilities, at least in the high school, if not in Sailor Way. You know how I feel about that, and I will bug you for the rest of my life in returning some of those. But we can't take our existing, well, what was, were the shop in Home Ec and put something else under there without thinking about, maybe someday we can get some of these back. So I would like to use some of that, those funds to consider, uh, the practical arts. I like to see the heads, uh, you don't have to worry about your grades, 'cause they won't let me in there to change them, so. Snow days. I worked very hard with our state senator, the state legislature, in getting, uh, the loggerhead broken. And I have to give Senator Gardner, Gardner credit for doing that. However, once they passed the blasted bill that was supposed to provide five days, they put a bunch of strings on it. And, you know, I've been saying, you have five and you can take four. That's not the case, as you know painfully. I tried and I about knocked my head against the wall getting the senate, getting the governor's office to line item veto those strings. There are a bunch of attorneys and non-educators that think they know everything. And what some of these things are gonna cause going a day over a weekend to make it up. Boy, I'm glad I'm not teaching because there would probably be a revolution. We did make up one day during that terrible blizzard of 77, I think, but it wasn't over a weekend. So we didn't have any difficulty. The busy work, and I'm gonna call it that because that's what it is, I don't know how you're gonna get high school kids to do it. Senator Gardner said, will you flunk them? No, you don't. But I don't know what you do. And I really feel sorry for that staff at the high school if there are some that say, we're not doing that junk. I think it is junk. Uh, elementary kids will do it because teachers said so. My poor grandchildren in Bowling Green had nearly three weeks off. And, uh, oh, they're crying that they're gonna take their whole summer. Now, they have added time to the day, which I don't think is gonna work because of that extracurricular activities and at the high school level jobs. The day I've heard from one parent, my kids go to work at Cedar Point and he's starting Monday. Gotta have to deal with that. I'm at the point now where lots of things that Columbus are doing is taking away your, uh, daily work. And unfortunately, not many of those people are educators. And, uh, when it comes to curriculum, and two of my favorite complaints about that is English grammar isn't being taught anymore and hasn't been for a long time, and I can hear it, uh, curative writing. And we had a problem right in this community where, um, a candidate for office had his petition thrown out because somebody printed their name. Well, I think the board was, Board of Elections was wrong, but you have to be able to sign your signature. So take that for what you think it's worth. But I think we have to have curative writing starting about the second grade. And I would be a student for it because my curative writing is not very good, but, uh, grammar, I hear it misused all the time. Newspapers, sorry about that. You do it so much that I wanna take a red pen. But, um, we need to get grammar back. English grammar, American English grammar perhaps. I'm taking too much time. A thing that's in terrible shape, and I'm sure you know it, I don't know whether our money can be used for it or not. But, uh, the Sailor Way driveway, the school's driveway from Sanford Street to, uh, Douglas or Sailor Way is terrible. And I know some time ago, a deal was made that if we let, uh, we, the schools let, uh, them use that driveway, the city will keep it up. Well, the city doesn't have the money, and it's really falling apart. Sailor Way itself, the concrete is terrible. And what's causing it? Our buses. So.
We talked about that exact topic this afternoon.
So. I don't know whether the city can, can do anything or not. I know they've got a very ancient job to do throughout the city. But, you know, people in Valley do think that this is a God-given route and don't ever try to close it again. 'Cause I still hear that. But anyway, I thank you for your attention, and, uh, I have a couple other things, but I won't take your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else? Students, anybody? What's that?
They're good.
You're good? Okay. Item 16 is the date and location of upcoming board meetings.
Is it July 14th, when we've changed? I don't know why it keeps showing up as the 14th.
What is that correct date?
Should be the 7th, right?
I think so, yeah.
So the next four meetings as it stands today is May 12th, June 9th, July 7th, and August 11th. Okay, okay. With that, move on to item number 17. A motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Haybermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Time is 8:47.